Motion.
I'll make motion approved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Call for a vote, please. Item two, we didn't have any items removed there, so we'll go on to item three, administration. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on PC twenty twenty one dash fifteen, amending chapter one fifty six regarding subdivision regulations. Mrs. O'Neil.
So we have been working on this for a little bit of time now to get it, to get to this point, so I'll kind of just tell you what we've kind of updated since the last meeting. We added in some of the requirements for the sidewalks as well as streetlights. There's some additional wording that we probably need to in- insert in within the streetlights. And then that's pretty much the biggest things that were added. There's some, some little errors that were found. And I'm, so I'm happy to answer any questions for you, and then if you. Kind of go from there, so.
Think for me, the one that we've already, looks like we're made an adjustment there was that. Just a wording change there, one fifty six point oh six one G, just eliminating the word either. I'm jumping way down, so if we got something before this, we can go back up, but. Taking the word either out just for clarification, then in on one fifty six. Point zero six two on streetlights, changing that wording, if you would. Give us the reasoning for that, that portion there.
Sure, and there's also probably, that's the area that also we need to look at to add some additional wording that you guys can kind of bounce some ideas off of. So it, it currently says the when, and the one that you guys were sent out by, it says installed by a franchise electric company. Uh, the only franchise electric company is OG&E. The co-op is not a franchise company, so that kind of limits them to be able to do anything. Uh, so that was changed at last minute, however, we also need to be able to allow for developers if they want to put their own streetlights in or. Um, however that may work. Um, instead of just requiring where the electric company is required to put them in, so. Um, be happy to entertain any ideas of wording that you guys have, or if you guys think that's a good idea, or. What you guys want to do.
I, I had one comment in that same area, I think, one fifty, one fifty six oh. One fifty six point zero six two. On page thirty eight of our packet. Item D says location of streetlights shall be as follows, and I was just curious if we should insert a minimum there. So the minimum location of streetlights shall be as follows.
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, it's not asking for a lot, so I think using that as the minimum standard would be prudent.
Yeah, we can add that in there.
On the, back up to A. On changing the wording to by an electric company that is providing electrical service. If it's for the developer, just thinking out loud if it should be. Or provided by the HOA, or if it needs to be something that's going to be. Anybody got any thoughts on that additional wording? Because you want it maintained. If you leave it up to the each property owner, it may or may not be maintained.
Are you talking about item A?
Item A, yes.
Talks about the electrical company.
Streetlights, yeah.
And, and adding something so that they have to maintain it? Is that what you're asking?
No, it's a, it's only, the, the, the new wording for it is all required new street lighting shall be installed by an electrical company that is providing the electrical service. And Danielle mentioned having some language if the developer wanted to provide their own. They would leave some room for them to do that if they chose to. But. I would think it would need something, some language in there to tie it back to. An entity that's going to maintain those, and the developer's not, they're going to be gone, the individual homeowner. Uh, so if you're going to let them get away from, uh, having the electric company do it, does it need to be an HOA? And if you don't establish an HOA that maintains these, then you have to go with the electric company or. Just a. What's that? Yes, it is providing an option, um, so whatever that language needs to. Address is my, is my question.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I had the same, sort of same language, same concern with that section, and, and I think you're right. There should be an option for the developer to put additional lighting beyond that, that's, that's provided by the, by OG&E or whomever the, the electrical carrier is there. But you're also right, i- if there is not a legal entity that is charged with providing some sort of perpetual maintenance fund. Uh, for that lighting, there's no one for. Code enforcement to contact and go after to make sure it's properly maintained. Uh, whereas if one of the OG, OG&E lights are out, or the pole's damaged, the city can call OG&E and say, go take care of your pole. But I, I think you're exactly right to, if the developer exercises that option. To put additional lighting beyond that, that OG&E standard, then there needs, it needs to come with a commitment to an HOA or some sort of. Legal entity providing a perpetual care, uh, agreement, so that the code enforcement can have someone to turn to.
So would that be the language to be provided by an entity?
I mean, we could certainly come up with that language, that's not, I haven't fully come up with that language, but I think it would, I think it would have to come with the creation of, of an HOA or the equivalent. Uh, legal entity that's charged with. Maintaining those.
So, so if you did that, would that be getting away from? It, it says all required street lighting shall be installed by the electric company.
I think it would be, I think, I don't think that language can stay in there, I think it's got to be that street lighting may be provided by. The minimum street lighting could be provided by the electrical provider, but the developer has the option of, of installing additional lighting.
And if they choose that, then they, they're, that's the clause you're talking about.
Yeah. I mean, because frankly, the minimum OG&E lighting's not very much.
Right.
It's inters- basically intersection lighting. And I'm happy to work on developing that language if the, if the committee wants me to, but.
I, I, is it a? I wonder if we can. My hope is to help move this forward, if we can come up with something that, I don't know if we can, at a minimum, or if that's a good idea, or. If we're only, if we're adding or changing a sentence, or. Or two, is it? A good idea to do it now?
If the, if the committee wants to go ahead and take up some other sections, I'll work on some language for that one.
Okay.
Real quick, see if I can get something drafted.
Any other questions on the, that? The changes for one fifty six?
Yes, I do have something else back on page, um, thirty in our packet. In section one fifty six point zero four five. Under conveyance plats. The, the first part of that. I have a little bit of concern with, because it seems that it may give the developer an option to develop a portion of a piece of property. And then turn around and have that entire piece of property replatted. Without going through the plating process. Am I reading that correctly?
And actually, that was a section I was going to talk to you guys about, it should have been noted here, but I don't see it now. Um, whether or not we wanted to keep that section or not altogether. Uh, the reason being, we don't really have that many conveyance plats that have ever come through that I've seen yet. Um, but if we want to keep that, then yeah, we definitely need to address that. Um, is that that section A?
It is, yeah, section A where it's the purpose, the first, first part of that. And maybe I'm not understanding that correctly, but it just seemed as though there was the option to go through the. Plating process without coming. Through the channels that everybody else is required to come through.
So that it still has to go through the, the planning commission and council, however, it's not a. It's not an official plat that's going to be recorded, so it's, it even says where it's, uh, it's an interim step. Uh, in the subdivision development of land, so it's not even. One that, it's kind of like the one that gets done before a preliminary plat even, or even before a sketch plat, or for that matter. That's the way I'm, that's the way I'm reading it.
Uh, well, then I'm, I'm fine with, I mean, I don't know if we need to keep that section or not, but.
Right.
As long as someone has to go through the proper process, then I think it's fine.
Yeah, because it says approval procedure, uh, planning commission and city council.
Because typically this would arise when there's a land transaction that's unplatted city property. Am I understanding that right?
I'm not sure to be honest, because I've never dealt with the conveyance plats anywhere that I've been, so, um, that's. Tom might be able to have a better hold on that one, or even John possibly, but I, I've never dealt with that one.
You're, uh, I think you're, the note you're talking about seeing maybe further up in this portion about whether to, I guess the question was whether to keep conveyance plats at all?
Mm-hmm.
Or?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I don't know that I've. Have, have we done one? I don't know that I've been a part of a conveyance plat ever.
I, I have not, not, I'm, I've been here about two years, but I've not, I've not done one, I've not seen one since I've been here either, but so I don't know. I don't know that they've been done, honestly, but that doesn't mean they haven't.
Any thoughts on that, whether? Do you even have it at all, or?
Yeah, I'm probably not a good judge of that. I don't deal with that either, or I haven't dealt with that, I just, I looked up what, how conveyance plats are used in other municipalities and. All of them were essentially that this was done for land transactions that were unplatted city property. Um. But if that's not even something that we exercise, then. I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm not the one to answer that, I'm.
To me, it seems like if we, if the goal is to move this forward, we're not sure if this is a, a tool that we want or need, maybe strike it for now. We can obviously work on language if the need arises, it's hard for me to analyze the language not knowing or understanding the need.
And something to think about too, if we're not understanding of how it's going to work and all that, then how is it going to be enforced? So just. You know, my, my thought behind, behind even the thought of removing it is. One, we never really dealt with it since I've been here, and most of, most everything that comes in is either going to be a sketch plat, preliminary plat, or final plat. And we really haven't had, we've had very, very few, if any, uh, sketch plats, so. You know, it, most of it's got to be plaid, and they can't do it for development anyways, and typically someone's going to want to plat something, they want it for development typically. That was just some thoughts that I had, so, just speaking aloud.
So this is something that's always been in our ordinance?
Yes.
Just never been exercised?
Correct.
Or that we know of?
Correct, that we know of, yes.
Whitney, do you see any issue with striking that, since it's something that's never used?
I don't, I mean, from a legal perspective, from property, for property law in general, I don't know why you would ever do this or bother with this, so I'm not sure why this is here.
Okay.
Any other questions or, um. Comments about the?
Can I be a little picky about one section that I, it's just, I kind of don't know why it's there exactly?
Sure.
So on page thirty five, one fifty six point zero six zero. To me, that section reads more as commentary, so it's kind of like guidelines for good design of subdivisions and things like that, but it's very much. Discussion oriented about what should and should not be the goals as opposed to shall and shall not, so it's not really setting any objective standards, it's just kind of providing guidance. I don't have a problem with the language exactly, I just don't know why it's in there as part of the ordinances instead of a commentary to the ordinance.
Okay. And that's, I think Tom had some questions on that same area, actually, if I remember correctly, but, uh. But yeah, that's something that we can definitely, uh, work through.
What's the answer to that? Do you strike that, or do you, how does it?
So, I mean, if we were dealing with it. If we were dealing with it from, from my viewpoint, if we were dealing with it, thinking about this akin to a statute or something like that. It would be put as commentary under, under some other guidelines, so it would be commentary about how it should be used or considerations. But it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have the level of an ordinance, because it's basically you've got an unspecified ordinance running around that doesn't do anything.
I don't know if this is possible, but just a thought, because we're also working on what's going to be turning into a resolution, kind of outlining exactly what's got to be included. On plans, plats, things like that, would that be kind of something that you could see that moving to rather than an ordinance? I mean, it's already there as an ordinance, the way it is now, but.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, I mean, it's not that the language itself is problematic, it's just, it doesn't, it just doesn't fit with an ordinance, it's, it's more of an ex- an explanation for the standards that we would use or guidelines that we would look at.
So if you all did choose to strike that section, just, we could make sure to put it in there saying to put it with the other pieces that's going to go with this. Or we, you know, or if we just want to, if you had want to, all want to keep it in there, then that's fine, too.
Okay. Anything else?
So, just so I'm wrapping my head around what we've done here, we, we're, we're striking the conveyance plat section. We're going to leave the design standards section that you just talked about? Or are we trying to?
I think we're leaving it, but moving it to more commentary for somewhere else was, was that.
That's, that's certainly a possibility, or for the time being, we can leave it since it's already in the ordinance, leave it the way it is, and then, once we get that resolution done, we can. Come back and omit, or strike that out, out of the ordinances essentially, so rewriting that little piece of it. Because some of this was, the, the neighborhood design section was added in there to add in the streetlights and all that, so I didn't get a chance to really go through and. Get all the, those small pieces fixed, so.
Whitney, are you happy with that?
I'm totally happy with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would you consider some proposed language back on the streetlight section?
Let's hear it.
Uh, on that one fifty six point zero six two, paragraph A. I would reword to say required new street lighting shall be installed either by a franchise vendor providing the electrical service or the developer. And that's the only change to that. Paragraphs, get down to paragraph D, the location of streetlights shall be as follows and shall serve as the minimum lighting schedule. And then you've got A through D. And then add a, uh, a paragraph E. Not to be confused with subparagraph A through D under that minimum lighting schedule, but add a paragraph E that says the developer may choose to install lighting. In addition to the minimum schedule set forth herein. If lighting is installed in addition to that maintained by the franchise vendor or electric utility. The developer shall ensure that a legal entity such as a homeowner's association or equivalent is established. And that the entity is assigned the obligation of maintaining the additional lighting in perpetuity.
I think the only question I have is back up in, uh, at the first one, so in section A.
Good.
Is, um, can you, that part again about it has to be installed by a franchised provider, what was the, that language there? I didn't.
For the developer, so you could have, you could still have, if you just wanted to build and have the franchised, uh.
The only question was because of like Southeastern Electric Co-op.
Okay.
If there's, i- if they're serving it, or if we could, I didn't know if that franchised, uh, if it just could be provider.
Hey, you probably could use the same language, I, I actually stuck it in in the, in that paragraph E, franchise vendor or electric utility.
Yes.
Um, and, and keep that language consistent, put that in paragraph A also.
Okay. How are we going to get that in a motion?
As amended.
Okay.
I mean, I, and I, I can provide that language to staff.
Yeah, I, I, I like what he just added in there, I think that is, is good. I can't repeat it all, but.
And I'm happy to reread it if, if you want to do it again.
No, no, I, I don't want to try to repeat it, I'll just, I'll just note that, um, are we, are we done with this?
Well, I was gonna, and, I made some notes, and tell me if I missed anything, but we were going to change in one fifty six point oh six one. G, we're removing the word either.
Oh, correct.
And then in one fifty six point zero six two, looking at re, the rewording that, uh, Tom just read. And striking the conveyance plat in its entirety. So those were my notes that regarding. So however, we can get that into a, if that's the pleasure of the commission to get that into a, a motion.
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay. How are you going to make that motion? How are you going to make that motion? Whitney, can we do it all at once? Whitney, would you like to make a motion?
I would not.
Yeah, I'll look for some guidance on that, whether to do it one at a time or all in one. Okay.
And you can make it simple and just do it as amended like Tom was saying.
I think she said, I think Drew can do it all in one, I think that's what he said.
Hey, Drew's pretty talented, he might.
I move to approve, uh, ordinance one fifty six as amended.
Does that work? We have a motion in a second. Call for a vote, please. All right, we're going to item. Three B, discussion, consideration, and possible action on ordinance O dash twenty twenty one dash twenty two regarding transitional zoning. Mrs. O'Neil.
I think I'll hand this one over to John for a moment.
Okay.
I know the basics, but him and Tom worked on it, and so I'll let him kind of explain what, what his mind is.
Thank you.
Maybe. So this was brought to, uh, Councilman Brittingham by Charlie Bachman. And so I know it's been talked about in different circles for quite a while, and so Charlie had brought a document to, that was provided to Tom, and Tom prepared this. Uh, so if Mr. Bachman would like to talk about it, I mean, I'd welcome him to come up and talk about why he thinks it's important, so.
I'm Charlie Bachman, I live here in Durant. I've been here since nineteen seventy eight on and off. I've been frustrated by a lot of our ordinances that are very difficult to understand and not very totally enforced. And I've seen zoning fights and zoning fights and zoning fights. And I've seen some of the things that have been done in other areas and other cities, both in North Texas and some cities here in Oklahoma. Transitional zoning is a process whereby it sets down a set of guidelines, have you all had a chance to read all this, by the way?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it protects the homeowner who has spent his time and money building his house, building his property. It makes it easier for the developer because he has consistent guidelines that he can move forward with going forward. It'll make this commission's, uh, work a lot easier because it, there's less inconsistency in the way things are done. We've been working on this on and off for. Two and a half, three years, give or take a little bit, timeout for COVID for about six months, I've been out of, out of action. But I've worked in areas where I've seen good ordinances and good up-to-date things, and there's a lot of our ordinances that are outdated and need to be updated. There's a lot of our codes that are insufficient, that need to be reworked. When I lived in McKinney, I was, I lived in Stonebridge Ranch. We transitioned from a homeowners', I mean, a developers' association to a homeowners' association. And I was one of the three people that rewrote all the laws and bylaws for the. And I was one of three people that rewrote all the laws and bylaws for the community. Uh, Stonebridge Ranch, if you're not familiar with it, is in excess of ten thousand homes. It's a large community in and of itself. And the more explicit you are in your guidelines, the easier it is to enforce, the easier it is to do everything going forward. So I'm hoping that the, if the planning commission looks at this favorably, we can get it passed, and then we can take it to the city council. And then we can see where we go from there. Thank you. Any questions for anybody?
No thanks. Thank you. Any discussion? Questions?
I'm noticing on the agenda that this is not a part of the public hearing. Does that mean we are not hearing from the community?
We, I think it's up to us.
That, that's exactly right, Chairman. You can't hear from the audience if you would like, so.
I think the, I had a couple of questions or thoughts, but I'm, if you guys have anything, I'll hold mine for a minute.
If we are gonna hear, if we are gonna hear public, either for or against, it might be appropriate to do that before discussion.
Okay. Yeah, do we have anybody in, anybody else for the, for the ordinance of the transitional zoning in favor of? Anyone, anyone? Would you like to speak in favor of, or? If, if you would, come up to the, go up to the mic. Give us your name, please.
I'm Don Crewmy, and I live down the street there on Little John, and just about everybody in the neighborhood that I've talked to is for it one hundred percent. And those that live behind us in Camelot are also for, for this, so short and sweet, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody in opposition to the, or?
I'm Buddy Holder. I know mostly all, but anyway, transitional zoning, you know, is used in a lot of different places. Lots of times it's to transition from a commercial or a retail location into a residential neighborhood. And you'll see transitioning from parking lots being between the sections and, you know, go from a a resi-, a commercial property to like an R three, then an R two, then into an R one in bigger developments. In this instance, we're looking at a neighborhood coming in that's gonna connect Madison Ridge into Heritage. And that's what it's about. It's gonna bring the second road into Heritage, and so there's two ways in and out. Something that we've been working on for three years. And first time I was, city mentioned it to me was probably four years ago when we was doing phase two and phase three, trying to correct the water problem. The problem with the way I see the thing written is it does not address the transitional in commercial or retail into residential. It's basically for this one project. I mean, it's obvious they don't want it to come through there. I understand why they don't, but on the other side of Madison Ridge, you have Little John and all that. We're building houses comparable to all of them, you know. Transitional zoning is used to protect property values. Camelot, really, the back of Camelot butts up to these subdivisions. Appraisers don't come into a subdivision, look at the house and say, well, what's behind it? You know, I mean, in another subdivision, you know. Also, it really don't protect property values. It talks about lot sizes, but it does not talk about what type of house or what size of house. So with what you have, we could have a four thousand square foot house on a half acre lot. We could butt a quarter acre lot up to build an eight hundred square foot two-bedroom home. How would that protect that neighborhood? It would not. You know, that would affect their property values. So you do have an ordinance, and it is going in a good direction. It will give people protection somewhat, but it's very incomplete. You know, and I'll just tell you upfront, you know, we made application for this subdivision in May. Had a couple of problems, got, got those straight. We've been in discussion with the city about this subdivision for probably at least, like I said, three years. Cause they wanted it when, when we started the other two phases. So we really consider ourselves already grandfathered in underneath before this ordinance would come in, especially since we made application in May. And, uh, you know, I think it would be best for the city to really have an ordinance like this, but take the time to really have one. What you have now is rushed and in a hurry and directed directly at this one subdivision. You know, so you can pass this one and then piece it together later, and no one will understand it, no, it won't be complete. Or you can take this one back to the table and make it a good ordinance and go forward with it. But that's just my comment, my thought.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else wanna speak regarding this ordinance?
I really was not prepared to, but, um, I'm Gala Gilery. I am the last house on Little John. My property is adjacent to this. Um, I've seen the, the, the proposed plat. So many houses on little bitty lots. I don't know how it could not affect property values. We have one acre lots on our street. And, um, and I'll just be honest, I'm, I'm worried. I'm, I'm a single person, and to have that many small houses right adjacent to me. And I don't, maybe I shouldn't bring this up, but I'm going to. They're already bulldozing trees and burning them. I was in my yard the other day, a couple of days ago, and there were ashes falling on me, and it was at the far side of that property. Now they're bulldozing trees down right beside me like they're gonna have another huge burning. I'm very concerned with the dry conditions, that there's gonna be a fire that's, you know, pieces of, of ash or wood are gonna float on my house and burn my house down. So yeah, I have some concerns already. I don't know who owns the property. I don't know where they are in the development, but I do have some concerns. Um, I, I'd like to know, you know, what, how many houses? My, my yard, it looks, from the looks of the plat, there's gonna be four or five backyards but up to my property. That's a whole lot of neighbors in a little space, so the transitional zoning makes sense to me. Not for just this project, but for any project. You don't wanna go from huge lots to little bitty crowded lots. Uh, I have grandchildren all the time at my house. I'm concerned with the amount of traffic and construction, and I would just like to know more about this. Um, but transitional zoning, from what I have read of it, just would make sense for the whole city. We have lots of new developments. Y'all know better than anyone. There's a whole bunch of new neighborhoods coming in. And you need to think far into the future, not just this instance, but far into the future of all these neighborhoods. How they're gonna mesh together and how they're gonna affect all the surrounding community. That's, that's my personal. I mean, that's me. I, and I, I don't know who owns that property right now. I don't know if it's already been sold, but somebody's already doing the work on the development. They're burning huge piles of trees.
I just wanna be clear on what we're discussing though, is, is a transitional zoning.
Right.
And not a specific piece of property.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, anyway.
But that's what's pertinent to me.
Sure. And I will let you know that i- i- if and, if and when that, that property is developed.
Mm-hmm.
If you live within the three hundred foot perimeter of that property, you will be notified of when they apply for a preliminary plat. And that plat will show you what, how many lots, the sizes, if you wanna be a part of that. You, you will get something in the mail regarding that.
Right, and we did the first time.
Okay.
But to me, this was just an instance of, wow, this makes sense. This makes sense. We want, we want neighborhoods to flow together smoothly and protect and be good for all of the community. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Linda Tucker, and, um, I live in Camelot Forest, and our property, our acre and a half backs right up to where they're building or going, proposing to build, which with an acre and a half of property, we really don't want house after. I don't have a problem with houses being built behind us, but not on tiny little lots. First, I mean, they've taken away my scenery, my view. I can't do anything about that. I have to, I have the same concern about fire. They have torn out the trees right behind the easement of my house. And when the, even burning a quarter mile away, we're getting ash in our yard. I don't want my house to burn. I mean, we paid a premium for those lots. And I don't want the property value to go down because there, I don't have a problem with houses back there. That's not what it is. It's the size of the lot that they're gonna be on. If they're gonna put them on three quarters of an acre lot, that's fine. But I don't want six or seven houses backing up behind my acre and a half. That's my biggest concern, and again, with the fire, I just, it really concerns me. I mean, they're just ripping trees out like crazy. And they're just leaving these piles out there, and it looks terrible. Now, I know that will get taken care of in time, but, um, my biggest thing is I really don't want houses close together that butting right up against my backyard. I don't know how, why the easement is, but it's not that wide. And I, I really, I know I can't stop new houses. I'm not trying to stop them. I'm just trying to make them spread out a little more. Makes sense?
So you're for transitional zoning? That boils down to that.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any discussion among the commission? Let's hear it.
I know several of us have some, have, have some questions. Uh, I had, my question was for, uh, city staff.
I've got, got one comment. I just wanna assure that, that lady that we do have a burn permit, and we do have somebody there, and it's been approved of the city. So we are watching what's going on there. I wa, I wanted that for the record.
Yeah, thank you.
This was, uh, labeled as an emergency. What's the emergency?
All ordinances always have an emergency clause tied to them, so that's, that's the section that you're seeing. Um, it just states whether or not, the, and that's usually for council to approve the emergency clause piece of it. Um, but you, that's in every ordinance. That's.
In bold, it says, "in declaring an emergency"?
Yes, that's, that's the way that, that, you guys rarely see where the actual ordinance structure is. Um, once you guys see, once you guys get done with the ordinance, then it goes into that structure of an actual ordinance outline. And so that's the, "in emergency" is, is always attached to every ordinance that we, that we do. And then council decides whether or not to, uh, have it as a, as a emergency clause. But what that means is that it goes into effect immediately, uh, otherwise it waits thirty days to be, uh, it put in place.
Based on comments, this seems like it is directed at a particular development. Is, is, is that the reason for the rush?
I do not know. Um, I don't know what the, it was, I, I know there's been conversations about it. Um, I said, John and Tom kinda worked on the actual ordinance piece of it. Um, and then it was, it was asked to be placed on the planning commission agenda for y'all to examine. Um, and I can, John might know a little more than I do at this point as far as why. Um, I will say that whenever it was brought to me in a, we had a ward meeting about a month ago, and that's where it was brought up again, and I made the comment that it would be ideal to have where we go through and get the comp plan done, and then we're gonna be doing a whole ordinance rewrite anyways. And to be able to have that there if we, if that was something that we wanted to look at and have it more thoroughly done than just, you know, have it done a little thoroughly and different.
The, the reason I ask is, you know, most of the, you know, you know, discussions about ordinances come with a, come with a proposal with, you know, intent to discuss. And, you know, with a approval following, uh, you know, months after. Um, this is looking for an approval today.
I, I think the process is way too slow to be honest with you. Uh, but Tom prepared this, and if you notice, it actually has an effective date for those that apply up to November, it wouldn't be effective until November first. The emergency clause is put in, so it actually gets codified, right? And then it, it becomes effective when it is published, but it actually has a date certain on when it would be come after that. So the rush is not really a rush, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So, but I know it's been talked about since before I got here, so, and Tom had it prepared, and I really don't like to wait to get things. And I would, honestly, I would rather you guys see them in ordinance form than in a draft form or a piece, because then you really don't know what you're recommending approval on. I, I believe you should see them in this manner, so, just John Dean's opinion.
Sep- separate question. If I, if I read this right, it would be possible for an adjoining landowner to have a plat with intended acres of, I, I, you know, lot size of, of an acre, and that would dictate their neighbor's use. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Yes, sir. Yeah, I've seen transitional zoning in Texas. It wasn't just a piece like this. It was multiple pieces like Mr. Holder, uh, alluded to. Uh, uh, materials that the houses had to be constructed of.
Right.
The, uh, size of home that had to go on the place, because the real intent there is to protect home values, because in the state of Texas, the cities do get property tax, so to protect those values and make sure that they increase is very beneficial to the city. So, but, but this has always just been a piece of the whole puzzle, so.
Yeah, I, I definitely can see some value in transitional zoning, uh, but, you know, to your point and Mr. Holder's point, uh, you know, addressing a few additional issues, you know, might be beneficial as well. Um, I'm not sure if I, you know, like the approach of, you know, neighbors being able to control, uh, you know, lot sizes to that degree. Uh, but, but some degree of, uh, transition, I think, would be helpful.
It does.
Yeah, and I, I had a question also on that. If you have a, you know, even if you have an R one, let's say we have somebody R one, and they get a plat with one acre lots, and it's next to a property under our current zoning classes as a R three. They get the plat and three years down the road, they don't build on it. This guy comes in, has R three, high-density residential, and goes to get a plat. He can't have high-density residential because his lot size has gotta be three quarters of an acre, based on these. If, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing probably a lot, but that seems, and, and this hasn't even been built on.
Right.
So to, to address maybe even some of those, I, it's just a further point of maybe it's, uh, it sounds like everybody's, uh, in favor of a transitional zoning. I think, you know, I'm in favor of it. I, I don't know, um, that, I mean, I don't, I don't know that this is the document for that, but.
If I can throw one thing in. There's nothing in this that even suggests that if you have a property, you can't go larger. If, in other words, if your property is, you're next to a half acre lot, there's nothing says you can't build an acre on it. You, you, you can go up at any time. It's just limits where you can go down. And it does make the difference as far as the property values are concerned. Uh, we've seen this, um, John's well aware of it, cause he's, he's worked in North Texas. He's aware that they do this pretty consistently down there. And it works. It works really well. It protects the homeowner, the developers. I don't have anything against development, but don't, don't misunderstand me. I just want organized development. If you just give them a Wild West and they just build anything next to anywhere, that's the mess the city's in right now. We're trying to prevent that in the future, and this ordinance would prevent those problems in the future. For whatever it's worth. You're, you're voting basically for the citizens, or you're voting for the developers? One of the two. Can't have both.
I have seen.
I have seen in the past, you were talking about getting a plat and not doing anything with it, uh, you know, Villa we had in place, if you hadn't begun construction within twelve months, then the plat, you could extend for one year, but after that, you couldn't extend that plat any longer, so the max of plat would ever be good for was twenty-four months without construction ever beginning, so, I don't think we have anything like that in place here.
I think we do, actually, yeah.
Do we, okay.
But they can, it doesn't have a limit on how many times they can ask for.
To dovetail off of Mr. Keener's question, so how, how does that typically work if you have two different zoning classes that are next to one another, how do you make that transition? Because what we're talking about would be like from R1 to R1, so how do you do that from R1 to R2?
Well, we talked about, uh, golly, a couple of weeks ago, uh, having that transition, so you couldn't have R2, you, for like R1, you could only have R2 next to it, and then R2, you could have one or three, right, but you couldn't have three next to one, and talking about doing that with the, uh, the zoning, the, the land use plan, uh, which I think makes perfect sense and I really think that's kinda where, uh, Mr. Bachman's wanting us to head, uh, but, yeah, it's difficult, because what happens when one gets zoned one and then what's next to it affects your property? We have, we have that anyway.
Sorry, I guess, I guess my question is more about using like a transitional ordinance, if you have an R2 next to an R1, obviously their lot sizes could be significant, significantly different. How do you make that transition in an ordinance like this?
Well, if you're gonna do it off of lot sizes, then it's pretty simple, right, but if you're actually doing it off, based off zoning classifications of R1, R2, R3, it's not necessarily that simple.
This is only for R1, it has nothing to do with R2, what's, or the others.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Strictly for R1 zoning.
I mean, it, uh.
But the overall picture, you have to consider the whole, the whole piece of the puzzle, so, I mean, we have mixed all already, right, we have the highest residential use up next to R1 in certain places in the city, uh, and we, we really need to stop that so we can have a better, organized, more orderly city, uh, this is a starting point, it's not the, the ultimate answer, right?
From your experience, is it, is it, does it better work through ordinances like this or additional zoning classes with, with bearing requirements?
I think it works both ways, but you gotta be very specific on how you're gonna do it. In Ovilla, we did it through property sizes just like this, uh, very similar to this, uh, but we only had real small commercial area and we had zero industrial in the whole city and that was intentional by the city council, because they wanted to be a suburb of high income, very affluent community is what they wanted to create, and they actually, we had properties or house sizes, the minimum house size could be built in the city was twenty-four hundred square feet, you could only use masonry products, uh, it was all to drive who lived in the city and the property value up, right, so it was very simple, the smallest lot you could have in the city of Ovilla was a third of an acre, the smallest lot, so, but it was, it was intentional, it was intentional how they were gonna build out and develop, so, uh, a, and I've seen in private point we're putting in place, the very type where it was issued through zoning, not, uh, through lot sizes, so, the different classifications of zoning, and a number of places I've been, they've had RE, residential estate zoning, so it was larger properties with larger homes built on them and then when you look at that distribution of who can build next to them, i- it's very limited, uh, so, more like the homes in, uh, Camelot, so they were very protected around them by lot sizes in the same manner, so.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, the practical standpoint is, just looking at this, this is, this is pretty obviously generally going to apply to R1 areas, but I would just like to point out, it does not specify R1, I mean, it's, it's open through the R classes, um, the other issue that I guess I have some concerns about is this, so if we have non-conforming chunks of land that end up here, are they gonna be subject to the Board of Adjustments, a CUP, so that the land can be used in some way, because the law frowns on unusable land, so that, that's just kinda my other question, is that something that we're, is there going to be a workaround or an appeal or something like that that goes through an additional procedure that could still be approved for some use of the land? And that, that's just not clear in here.
I think you can always go to the Board of Adjustment for a variance based on property, right? Uh, that's what that process is set up for, so you can use property that doesn't meet the requirements of the, the ordinance, so I do think there is a, a provision to account for that and we can make the change and add, I'll have Tom add the idea of R1 specifically for this, so.
Actually, the wording in this specifies R1. If you, let me.
New single-family residential.
Right. It says specifically shall apply to new, single-family residential construction in platted or unplatted subdivisions, so that's R1, that's exactly what the definition of R1 is.
In our code, it could be R1 or R2, so.
Yeah.
Or R3, so if, if that's the desire for this to be R1, we can make that change and have, have Tom make that change.
I, I do, I'll, I have some comments, um, and I am in favor of transitional zoning as well, um, I think it's a good thing as the city continues to develop, um, I do, the R1 designation I think is important, specifically for the way this one is written, um, I did have some concerns, um, uh, section one, A, number five, um, I think limiting the largest lot calculation to one acre, no matter how large someone's adjacent property may be, um, it doesn't seem like a prudent factor for the calculation, um, you know, if the, if the idea behind this is to take the average of the adjacent lot, then it doesn't seem that we should limit someone who maybe, maybe there's a development of four acre tracts adjacent to this, I don't know that we shouldn't, I mean, those four acre tracts are important to those homeowners, just like in this other scenario that's been brought up, so I don't know that we should limit someone's adjacent lot size to one acre, even if they had five or ten acres, I think that, I think their five or ten acre tract should be a part of that calculation.
Makes sense.
Uh, I had the same comment for, uh, section B, item one. And then section B, item two, uh, I didn't understand why we are proposing to introduce a seventy-five percent average when in the previous notes and, or in the previous items, we're using a ninety percent average. Just, I couldn't understand why the inconsistency would be there.
I agree.
Section, uh, section C, or paragraph C, excuse me, um, I haven't really wrapped my head around this one, but I'm wondering if, is it prudent to ignore the division by a public street for this ordinance only? You know, do, do the other ordinances, do we, um, do other, do other areas within our zoning ordinance define the word "adjoint" by ignoring a public street division? Because I, I think that's gonna open up a real can of worms with, uh, and this goes back to division of commercial and residential property, um, I think if we're gonna ignore the street, that's opening up a real conflict with what our other ordinances say. And then I had one more. Uh, section two, the repealer clause, and maybe this is just my ignorance in understanding this, uh, by repealing previous ordinance requirements with, excuse me, by repealing previ, previous ordinance requirements, it may conflict with this new addition that we're talking about, so if we're saying that this ordinance is gonna repeal the, it's, let's see, uh.
The repealer clause repeals anything in the code that conflicts with this ordinance.
This ordinance.
Correct, which is one of the issues that we have with our code, we have adopted a lot of different ordinances through the years and we have never repealed anything that conflicted with it, which is why you have, when it gets codified, why you end up with all of the conflicts throughout the code, that's part of the codification company's job is to remove those things, so, but without the repealer clause, they don't have the authority to do that.
I got you, I, I agree with the repealer clause then, but I think that goes back to my previous comment, um, with, we need to define things like property divisions ignoring a street or not ignoring a public street, um, because I think that's gonna be a huge conflict when it comes to residential, commercial lots adjoining.
I don't think this, I don't think this discounts those across the street, I think it, it provides clarification to say that it would include those across a public street, that's the way I read it. I believe that was Tom's intent. You agree, sir?
Yeah, so, so, so properties across, according to this, properties across the street would be considered adjoined.
Correct, so it's the whole area.
So if we have a, and I'm gonna go back to a commercial and residential scenario here, where does the privacy fence between commercial and residential get built if we're saying the public street, we're ignoring the public street is our adjournment? Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, sir, it does, that's a good question and I don't know, I know the answer to that, we had a commercial property owner ask that question today, so, so why in the street, why hasn't the screening been built previously, it's been zoned commercial for years and right up against commercial or residential, but it's never been developed, so.
Right, right. So I'm, I'm for this ordinance, but I don't know that I'm for approving it in its current state, I think there's a lot of really good information in here and some things that could be added that would make it a really powerful ordinance.
Could we just piggyback off that a little bit, we, I mean, we've got sixty-nine seventy-five running right through the middle of Durant, so if you intend to exclude that as one of the roads that we're talking about, you may wanna specify that. I don't know that that would have any implications in any R1, but it might.
It could.
Any other discussion? I'm in, I think, I'm in agreement, I, I think it's, transitional zoning is a great idea, I'm for it, I, I don't know that this answers the, or is the complete document we need, but I do think it's a good idea.
I think this is an excellent start to an ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any more discussion?
Can I, can I ask just one more question, uh, as you consider this, my concern also is, do we have the infrastructure in place for these new neighborhoods that are, are, uh, high residential rates, I, I know we have so many new neighborhoods and I don't know if that's a part of your expertise, but.
Well, the, uh, one thing it kinda guides us here, even by legislation, if it's not on our agenda, it's not up for discussion, so those parts of it, uh, I don't, I don't wanna sound insensitive to that, it would be a, a good question for the MNO department, um, and maybe even community development, if you wanted to reach out to them.
Okay.
And, uh, maybe a good question for them.
And I wanna clarify too, I am not against development, I welcome neighborhoods, we have a fantastic neighborhood, everybody knows everybody, it's just a great place, and that's part of the reason I chose that neighborhood, because I felt safe and secure, and so, yeah, I think it does affect property values and I think in the future, that would affect people's decision on where to buy and where to live, if I would've known this several years ago, would I have chosen this neighborhood? Maybe not, because at my stage in age, I want to feel secure and I want a place that's gonna be good, you know, for the long run, um, and, and we have so many new neighborhoods, you know, y'all have a huge job, I don't envy you at all, but I think we have very competent people and I respect that, thanks.
Before you go, can I make one more comment? I don't wanna be a pain, but. We have, have had a tendency for the last three years to change this word, change that word, change this intent, change that intent, and the fact, we, we get nothing done. My hope is that you will go ahead and vote for the concept and pass it, take it to the city council and let them decide whether or not, we can always go back and re-change the wording, work with it, uh, again, I spent nine months just going over the, the HOA requirements in the state of Texas when we rewrote the rules for Stonebridge Ranch, and it is complex and there, there are always little things that need to be tweaked, but if, if we obfuscate and just keep putting things off, we never really get anything done, so I'm hopeful that you'll go ahead and make an up or down vote tonight and then we'll take it to the council and let them make an up or down vote and then we'll move forward from there, thank you.
Thank you, also, I'll take this time too to let everybody know, if, if you haven't been a part of this process before, that, um, any votes that we have are a recommendation to the council, city council, and they meet next Tuesday, and so if you want to have your comments, uh, heard by them, encourage you to show up to their meeting and you'll have the opportunity to speak, they make final decision, we make the recommendation, so I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. Do we have a motion on this item?
Additional comments, sorry.
Okay.
Um, and I, we now, I'd like to hear your response to it if, if you're willing, but, uh, I generally have a, have a concern about this approach just being a percentage of, uh, you know, an average next to it, it seems like that may cause as many issues, unforeseen issues, as, as it would solve, uh, you know, I for one am, am all for the, the, the concept of, of transitional zoning and maybe that needs to happen through zoning classes or a different venue, but, uh, it seems like there's gonna be as many issues caused by, uh, a simple percentage, uh, by adjoining property, is this gonna solve, um.
I mean, I'm, I'm generally in favor of the concept and I, I think that, I think that this is a good start, I think there's a lot of things that need to be clarified before we proceed off down into this, um, but I do have some concerns about those percentages and places where that's gonna swing into play and what that's gonna affect that we don't even know about at this point, that's part of why I was asking about that board of adjustment and, and that part of the procedure, because I, I mean, I, if there's a workaround, I mean, Kevin and I spent a lot of years on the board of adjustment before we hit this board and so, I mean, I think, I think that that's a pretty good way of dealing with non-conforming property, um, but yeah, anytime you, anytime you start talking percentages to me, I go, oh, God, so, I mean, it, that kinda, it gives me a little bit of hesitation with where this is right now versus where I would like to see it if we're gonna, if we're gonna really buy into this concept of transitional zoning, so, I mean, I'm in favor of it, there's a lot of projects that we've seen, even in the last four years, that transitional zoning would have been a huge benefit to everybody in the neighborhood, but I don't know that this is, I don't know that this is the version I'm ready to sign on to yet.
So is this best addressed through a table? For further discussion?
So. My only issue is, I guess with the table, is that to some extent, this is the kinda thing that I think is more appropriate really for city council to decide, because this is, this is overall city policy for how we're gonna move into planning for our future, so, we are important in terms of recommending, making commentary, but in terms of deciding what standards we're gonna use, what percentages we're gonna use, I think that's a city council issue, so, I'm kinda on the fence, I mean, on one hand, I don't particularly like the form that this is in right now, when it's hitting us, at the same time, I don't know, I don't know that they need to. At the same time, I don't know, I don't know that they need to fix it and clean it up for us in order to submit it to city council. I mean, I think that's something that could be cleaned up before it ever gets to city council, because in terms of the general policy, I have no issue with transitional zoning whatsoever. How that should look and the form it should take, I tend to think that that is the business and the avenue of city council more than us.
Thanks.
Do we have a motion? I don't have a motion, I have a comment. Um. I, I do think this is something that we need to discuss further. Um, and I understand Mr. Bachman's comment about continuing to table things until nothing ever gets done, but, um. I do, I do think we've changed the path on that a little bit here in the last couple of years. Um, case in point, the case we heard earlier, where we got that one modified and passed. So I'd like to see this come back. You know, we can, we can table it and I know that comes with a date, so we could table it till the next meeting and have further development on it at the next meeting to. To review and possibly pass at that point.
Yeah, even if we, if it's not taking effect until November one. Then it wouldn't matter. Wouldn't matter if it came back even up until October, it would end up having about the same timeframe to that point, but.
So I'll make a motion to table this to our next meeting and in the meantime, have some further development. Of, of the ordinance.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Call for a vote, please. All right, we're going on to, uh, public hearing portion, item number four A. I'm going to recuse myself and hand it over to Drew Jackson. For this particular case.
Excuse me. Moving to a, agenda item for a discussion consideration of possible action on PC twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. Ms. O'Neil.
Staff received an application for rezoning to go from R three to I one. Uh, the development idea is to place additional storage facility, um, development in that, in that area. The lot is about thirteen acres. Um, it's currently vacant. The surrounding, um, zoning is residential, commercial, and there's industrial across the street and there's ag as well, uh, in the general area. The, the lot does meet this, the current requirements. Um, the fut- the current future land use map has this area as high density residential. Uh, but it also should be noted that we are working on the, um, future land use map for. The city. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The applicant's also here, if you have any questions for him.
Before you run off, I do have a question.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the picture map. It looks like everything around it for all that, the, the current future land use map says high density residential. To me, it looks like what's around it is very much business oriented. Is, is there any residential actually around this property?
I don't believe there is. Um, in just that general area, there's not really any residential houses until you get kind of on that other side of the railroad tracks. Um, and then further, further east and north. But not, uh, other than the, the development that's going on, on the east side of the church, or sorry, the west side of the church. But that's about the only residential that's coming to mind of actual houses.
Are we able to bring up the, uh, maps on the screen for public viewing? Uh, I think she's referring to page sixty.
It looks like fifty-nine in my packet.
Looking at the aerial or the zoning?
I was looking at the aerial was what I was looking at.
Page fifty-nine, yep.
It should be the page right, 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 one word for that one.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was what I was looking at, because when you, I mean, when you do look at the next page, I had some concerns, cause it's that one little bitty.
Thank you.
One little bitty kind of edge up there that's actually touching the other industrial and then we've got kind of this swath that's going into. This area that's between commercial and then R three and so I had, I had some concerns. If you just look at it from the zoning map. It doesn't, the zoning map looks like a different story than looking at the aerial map, which shows this is very clearly kind of a lot industrial business area. Not an R three area like you might expect from the zoning map.
Any more questions for Ms. O'Neil?
Oh, no, I just had a comment. But, no, I don't have any questions. I agree, I agree. Sorry. Um, I, I do think, I mean, in, in looking at the future land use map, it doesn't, uh. Appear that this would be the correct designation, but, um, considering our future land use map is close to twenty years old, nothing in this area has developed in that manner. Um, it has all developed as I one around that. I mean, I think we've got. Oil and gas wells to the north and south of that particular property. Um, and then the real transition, going back to potential transition zoning in the future, is. That big swath of R three, which is now a church property, moving west, um. So I don't know that I see an immediate issue with this in, in reviewing it.
Would the applicant like to speak? Does anyone, uh, does anyone in public want to, uh, speak in favor or against? Not seeing any ready for discussion, any discussion? How about a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
So a motion to approve, call for vote?
Move on to item four B, discussion consideration of possible action on PC twenty twenty-one dash twenty. Final plat request for property at forty-three nineteen southeast third avenue.
So this was a, um, a plat that was brought in to, to essentially, uh, divide a piece of property off. Um, for a residential house to be built on. Uh. The, there was a, um, we'll have to make, if, if it does go for approval, we'll have to do a corrective deed that's gonna be needed. Uh, staff also has some, uh, we never did hear anything back from the, um, surveyor as far as having the signature blocks be corrected. Other than that, um, staff did not have any issues with the, with the plat itself. And I believe this one, oh, there was one other one. The, uh, driveway would have to be a sealed surface. Um, and that was the only other comment that was made from staff. And it would be served by rural water and then it would be an aerobic system.
The piece that, uh, that we're looking at, the, the final plat, does it, does it already have a house on it?
So this is a little bit of a weird situation that we, that we've kinda found ourselves in a lot recently, where, um. Lots have been sold off, but then they don't realize that they have to go through a plating process. Um, and on, and normally whenever we find out about it, if we find out about it, there's usually something already built there. In this particular case, they bought the lot and was getting ready to start building. Um, they came in and thinking that they were doing all the right things. They came and talked to staff, John, Tom, and several others. Uh, about this and the agreement was made between, between staff and the applicant was that they could go ahead and have a building permit as providing that there. That the plating is, was, was moving forward. And we received all the information for the plat, so. Uh, and that's kinda where we're at. It was a little bit of a different situation.
But does it have a house on, it looks like it has a house on it already.
It does not. They're building a house. They're probably just showing the location of where the house is gonna be.
They're showing the forms, I guess, maybe it's been framed up. Okay, okay.
Probably, yeah.
So on the, it looks like from the survey, if you take the numbers of the actual bold survey. And calculate that, it's like four point two acres and not five.
Okay.
And I, so that was my question on, does, does it, does it include, maybe at, at one point it went across the street and, or the highway there, the road. Uh, it looks like it starts a measurement from over there, but the, what, what is to be included or not to be included in the calculation for acreage?
It would be whatever that legal description would be, would be my understanding, because that's gonna be your property. I'm not sure if those easements can be.
Included in the calculation?
Included. I, I, normally what we've seen is whatever legal description's there, that includes everything. Um, that they're, that they're, that they're essentially buying, that's gonna be their property. Uh, that one's a little weird, I guess, because of the, of it being a state highway is my guess. Um.
And you do understand that, right? So if it's, if it's a lot block and a road comes through, you're taking property away, you're reducing the lot size. But when we're talking about agriculture, you have a road go through, they retain, they retain the width of the road?
So on, anytime, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm not following. So if it's, and see if I'm, I'm kinda in the same ballpark. With, with a plat normally, whatever, but it's a roadway, it'll show the easements and everything, but it's, your property lines also goes typically right up to. Or near the roadway or right of way line. And that could be the case here where that could be that right of way. Um, but I'm not sure if, if the legal description actually calls that piece out or not. I'm not.
Whitney, are you following what we're talking about?
Okay.
On, uh, page, oh, she's got it right there, you can see it a lot better.
Seventy-four.
Yeah, seventy-four, page seventy-four.
The bottom of page seventy-four, actually. Just that bold square that you're right, right on it.
Even though it's not in the role of black, it's, it's calculated all the way here?
Yes.
Okay. Cause if you, if you don't, it's like this, the whole area is four point two acres, all the way here is five acres.
Yeah, so just in general, a, an easement's always gonna be included in the property and it's gonna be calculated with the acreage of the property.
Right.
Because essentially the easement is. A reservation of the use.
Correct.
But up until it's actually used, it belongs to the landowner. The landowner can do. Whatever they want, as long as they're not infringing on the ability to use the easement.
Right. But I don't know if that legal description in, includes that easement or not. That's what I don't know.
Let me, did you attach the warranty deed?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. The, the deed does state the six sixty dimension versus the five.
Whatever.
Okay.
Sorry. Jump back to the other page.
So what we're seeing is the plat is cutting it out because it's recognizing the easement, but the easement still are the overall property and acreage.
Right.
Okay.
On the deed itself is, I'll ask Whitney, I'd mentioned it to Danielle before we started, but on the deed. My question was, it has, it's, it's being sold by Richard Jensen to, to folks.
Right.
And as you come down there, you have the signature line was Richard Jensen. Then the notary says that Robert Dawes appeared before them to sign.
And that's why we need the corrective deed.
So that was my question. Does that affect what we're, okay.
I was able to speak with Tom right beforehand and he said it would not affect the decision making. We just have to make sure that whenever we do make a motion, that we just say that it needs to, needs to have a corrective deed on file.
Okay.
With, with the corrective names.
Truthfully, what this comes down to is a script nurse error. Somebody was prepping this and missed that the names switched, so.
Yeah.
Right, okay. I wasn't sure what errors mean something and which ones don't really mean anything.
That, that's not an important one.
Okay, yeah, I just, don't worry about that one. The wrong person signed it out, don't worry about it.
Well, well, let me rephrase that. That's not an important one for us. That might be an important one for somebody else, but not for us, so.
I think that was it. On my questions or concerns, anybody have comment, question, concern, anybody in the. Audience looking like they wanna talk, anybody? Any other discussion? Motion?
I'll motion we approve. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second and there's the, boy.
Do you wanna have those contingencies placed in there?
Contingent on a cor- correction deed?
And the driveway and the signature blocks?
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Horner need to reword that motion?
That's okay. We can just, with the having it stated, I think we're, I think we're good.
Is that one of those things that doesn't matter? Yeah, there we go.
As long as all of us knew what the intent was, we're okay.
Uh, okay, yeah, it doesn't matter, okay. All right, item four C, discussion, consideration and possible action. On PC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, a final plat request for property located near the intersection of West Main and State Highway seventy.
You went a little fast there, Kevin. We didn't even get the vote recorded yet.
Well.
You're fine, you're fine.
Trying to tone down the excitement in the room.
I had to give you a hard time a little bit, liven things up. So this is for a final plat for the, uh, Durant Victory subdivision phase one, that's located just west of the Methodist Church on Highway seventy and West Main. Um, everything on here, uh, was, was exactly how it was in the preliminary plat, which is kind of the big things that we look at when it comes to final plat. The, um, and all the sta- city staff did sign off on it, uh, saying that they were, that they were fine with the final plat. Uh, it should be noted though, that the, they did go through the board of adjustments for a front back, front setback, uh, variance. And so they were granted that variance and that was reflected on the preliminary plat, uh, but that's the only difference, but that was granted by BOA some time ago. Um, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and the applicant's also here, if you have any questions for them.
So no changes other than the board of adjustment?
Correct.
And my, my screen's not showing anything now, so, um. Everything, everybody signed off on it. I just wanted to make sure I was seeing it.
Correct. Yes, all city staff and sign, sign up on this one.
Okay. Any? Questions, comments, commentary? questions, comments, commentary, discussion? Are the two means of egress, are they completed?
Last I heard, well, all roads were pretty well completed that was going in there for the two, for the preliminary plat side. Um, they have the one that goes, let me look at the name of it, cause I know I don't remember.
They are completed.
Yes, that, I can't remember the name of it, yes, you're, to, the short answer is yes, they are completed.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Just trying to be specific on names.
I make motions to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, call for a vote, please? Yeah. Let's go to item four D, discussion, consideration, possible action, PC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, preliminary plat request for plat, property located near the intersection of West Main Street and State Highway seventy.
So this is for the phase two of their development, which is gonna be on the north side of, um, of phase one. Um, trying to think, there's, uh, uh, okay. There's, uh, about eight total acres, they're looking at about thirty-five lots with single family homes. Uh, be the same real water, uh, district and then the, um, be city sewer extended. Um, there should be a note on the lots one through eleven and then lots twenty-six and twenty-seven. It does show fifteen foot setback versus the twenty-five that's normally required. Um, if you guys, you guys, with the, going through this beginning phase, you guys do have the authority to say, okay, we're willing to accept that and council will have the same, the same decision if they wanna accept that fifteen foot difference since we're going just at the preliminary plat and hasn't gone any further than that. Um, the, uh, street name that you guys have in your packet was actually changed and then that was, um, what it was, what it was changed, it was also put in there, the map was given, it was from Uranus to Pluto. Um, and then see, staff did recom- uh, did sign off. There was some recommendations, uh, let me look here. So they did show the, about the, the lots and that's something that's, that if you guys have any issues with, uh, should be mentioned. Um, the, so Mark and I were not able to sign off on it because of the lots, lot side, but it's because of the setbacks. Uh, cause staff does not have the, have the authority, but planning commission and council does. Um, there, uh, one of the recommended stipulations was about the signature blocks, then that was submitted, um, and has been corrected as of today. Um, and then the street name was also on there. So other than that, that was, that was it for the preliminary plat.
I was unaware that we had the authority to change that or allow that, um, variance.
For the, for the preliminary plots and final plots, the ordinances give you guys the ability to, um, cause if it's different, you got, you guys have that ability to say, okay, we're willing to, for whatever reason that may be, um, in this particular one, there's some, uh, easements and rightaways back there with the railroad and the gas line that's back there, uh, that's caused them some, some issues, what, was what they were told, I mean, they can further explain it if need be, um, but on certain preliminary plots, uh, you can, on this one, so, like preliminary plots you can. But if it's already gone to, like, the first one went to preliminary plat, was approved. And then that was already what was decided upon and then they wanted a variance from that. And staff kid doesn't have that ability, so that was B O A. Is that confusing? Clear as mud?
Uh, yeah, I just, I've, I've never even heard that. I've never, never been aware that we had that authority, so that was the, that was a question.
Yep, it learns something new every day whenever I read the ordinances, not, but, but on the, that particular one and it really kinda came out whenever we was reviewing the subdivision ordinance just in general, and we kind of stumbled across that, um, in there and I was like, oh, okay, so.
So what happens if, uh, um, we, what happens if there's an approval without the fifteen foot? It goes back to the twenty-five foot? Um, I guess just the, the structure will have to fit, fit inside that footprint?
Correct. Yes, they would, if you guys did not want the fifteen foot setback, then they would have, they would be required to do the twenty-five.
That, that fifteen foot setback only applies to those perimeter lots, if I'm reading that correctly?
Yes, it's only those.
The interior lots are still twenty-five feet.
Correct, correct.
So I may be, I may be slow, but, uh, why would we allow for adjustment to the?
I will, I will, I can let the developer and the, and the applicant kind of further explain why they're asking that.
Okay, one more question before, if you don't mind.
Sure, definitely.
Um, so phase one had to have an adjustment, how does that adjustment affect phase two?
So the way it wraps around, um, here's a good. So these lots over here were the ones that were approved by the board of adjustment for the fifteen foot variant, so it's up Venus. The ones that are affected are the back lots of Mars and then what is now Pluto.
You're on the top of page one eleven.
Uh, I believe that's.
So I guess first off, what exactly was the adjustment?
The adjustment was, uh, was ten feet, so fi- from twenty-five to fifteen feet.
On what lots?
Um, on, for phase one or two.
On one?
On one. The entire development, outside of the development that's on the, that faces or butts the Methodist Church.
Okay.
Along Venus.
And you're, and you're saying that affects phase two, how?
So phase two, they've also asked for a fifteen foot on these, on this kind of the L shape on those back lots that runs on Pluto and then Mars. They've asked for fifteen foot there as well.
So the ones at the top of the page are also along the line of the Methodist Church, is that what you're saying?
No, they are not. They have not been approved by the board of adjustment.
I don't think y'all are, yeah, I don't think y'all are talking about the same thing. He, he, he's asking is, did the, uh,
Oh, okay, sorry.
variance from the board of adjustment affect phase two?
Oh, it did not, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Is that the question, okay.
I misunderstood, no, it does not. Um, this was not even thought of at that point in time. It only is for phase one, I apologize.
Thanks.
Just made it muddier, didn't I?
I'm really good at that, so, I don't know if he was hearing me.
I can too, it's real easy.
I don't need any help there, but.
Yeah, we'll hear from applicant, fill, fill us in on what, uh, if that's the only difference on, tell us about the, needing that variance.
Hi, uh, I'm Danny Curry, I'm the engineer of the property, civil engineer. So, the owner of the property is requesting to go with fifteen foot because we have the gas line easement at the back of the property. And that will leave them like thirty foot building space. And you can't fit, you know, any structure for thirty foot. So they need at least, you know, fifty feet, just to fit like a sixteen hundred square foot house or fifteen hundred square foot house on it. And this is the main reason why they're requesting this setback from twenty-five to fifteen. And the other, the other reason is you have those lots next to the church already at fifteen foot. So you have two lots next to them here. If you set it at twenty-five, you see how that's gonna look ugly. You're coming from fifteen and you have that two houses at the end at twenty-five, sitting the deep. Uh, plus, you know, that will continue all the way. So you have all the outside lots in the subdivision at fifteen foot, but the inside lot at twenty-five foot setback. That will give you some kind of, you know, match look for the whole thing. But the main reason is for the gas easement, because there is like a sixty foot gas easement at the back of the property. You can see that, all that gas easement.
Mm-hmm.
So would that allow the proper distance from the gas line?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And it's the same on the west side as well, there is a gas easement. There's a gas easement all around this property, so.
Anymore as this Neptune goes out to the west? Or are we gonna have more potential residential, does it, does it go back out to a city street or does it stay on their property?
Uh, you're talking about this street Neptune?
Yes.
Uh, no, this, just come down. There is no future plans.
I guess my question is, are we gonna have an, another plat at a future date in this area that's asking for the same thing?
So, we have one foot private, uh, property at the property line. So in case anyone wanna develop, they have to buy that one foot from them. You see what I mean? So the easement do not go all the way to the property line. But I can't say it's not possible. They might buy the property next to them in five years or so, so.
Is there a reason why that, that puts left?
They want, they don't want any access, anyone from near them to access their road or their property. You see what I mean?
So they don't want, they were putting in a city street, they don't want anybody to use it?
Well.
That, that's exactly my question. I don't, I don't understand that.
Yes.
I didn't understand that.
Is it owned this for them or the city?
Uh, no, that's them, the street is for the city, yeah, it's owned by the city, yeah. Yeah.
I would recommend that they take it to the property line, huh?
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, and we're talking about this property over here, of their far west boundary? Is that what we're talking about, the far west boundary? That, that they're have it, they have the one foot setback?
Yes, that's correct.
The far west. So if there's a development over here?
Yes.
They're wanting these folks to build their own road instead of tying their road?
Well, the main reason is for the utilities, not just the road. Because they probably put five hundred thousand on sewer line.
Mm-hmm.
You see, anyone now can just go hook up to their sewer line if they want to. But. Yeah.
So is that a city sewer line or is that a, uh, or a, private sewer line?
It will be a city sewer line.
Okay.
It will be a city sewer line. It, they installed the lift, lift station, so it will be owned and maintained by the city of Durant.
Yes. So will the easement for that sewer line not stretch to the property line?
Uh, it's from the inside, it's from the east side of the street.
Okay.
Any more question about the setback?
Probably, probably.
Okay.
Any more questions for the engineer?
I don't. May, maybe my math is not up to snuff on this, but I'm not sure why we, why we need the fifteen foot easement in the front. I mean, the twenty-five foot easement would still give you fifty-seven feet deep on buildable area?
Well, we can't place any fill on that gas easement, so we're gonna start our, you see what I mean?
Oh, so it's a grading deal?
Yes, yes.
So you can't do anything on that easement?
Exactly.
So are they gonna have to build a fence on that easement to separate?
No, it's gonna be open area, but we just can't put any structure or any fill.
But they won't let you put anything on it?
Yes, nothing, even a fill like dirt, earth.
Wow. I'm guessing that's defined somewhere?
Well, it will be probably in the agreement of that easement from the gas company, yeah.
I just don't know that I've ever run across an easement that you couldn't grade or even put a storage building on for that matter, but.
Yeah, I don't think you can put any structure on it.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about those portable things, people putting in their backyard, but, um.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But you can't put any more fill on this, when you're saying you can't add any?
Well, I'm not sure about the limits, they probably will allow like one foot of fill maximum. But their gas line like four feet deep, I can't place twenty feet fill on top of it. They, they can't access it. Instead of spending twenty dollar per foot, they have to spend a hundred dollar to dig it down. So that's the reason for it.
And, and I will say, part of it depends on the industry and how much they're using it. So at one point in time, like now, the railroads, nah, they're kinda loosey goosey about what goes around it, but at one point in time, if you put a building on the railroad easement, they were gonna send you a real nasty letter to get it off, so this is, I mean, the oil companies, anything utility, industry wise, they're pretty rigid about enforcing their easement, so.
I don't. Can you give us the math? I, I know we talked in general, but can you give us the math of what distance they, buildable space they would have from front to back, from that easement? Um, what, what they're, what we're talking about there?
So I think it's one thirty-seven right now, uh, total. And we have, I don't have the distance of the gas easement, but I believe it was like from fifty-five to sixty feet, something like that.
Okay.
So, that will give you about eighty feet. And you know, if you have twenty-five feet, that would lift you eighty, it's twenty-five, so fifty-five feet. So the house need to be on the edge of the gas easement, if we went with twenty-five. So, we have to have a retaining wall. That's the problem, because we are raising the grade up for the detention pond to work.
Got it.
Okay, so the reason why this ten foot gonna be used for grading, otherwise, like, they have to go with like thirty-five foot house, which they can't fit anything on it, basically.
So I, one of the questions may go back to then, I can see, looking at the issue with the gas line, why was the variance needed for phase one?
Phase one grading, uh, purpose, because, so, the grading of this land, uh, we had to cut from the property near the church. So the backyard had like probably four to one slope, so they didn't like that, they wanted to have a flatter slope. So they requested the variance, so we can have a little bit like six to one slope for the backyard. That was the reason for phase one.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it sounded like that was more of a want and this, maybe the west side may be more of a need or?
Yes.
I don't know if that's, that's the way to look at it or not, but. I, I, I will say I was not in favor, favor of the board of adjustment. I wasn't on board with that decision. So, I just shared that, those thoughts, but.
I would, uh, like some commentary for some more experienced members of the commission, but wouldn't the preliminary plat be the time to make the changes and get things right? Rather than making variances upfront?
So, I, I mean, that's kind of one of my issues, because when it comes to designing, that's one of the things you want to know and put into your design, because maybe instead of having to ask for all the variances, maybe you don't design the neighborhood to look like this and to fit this in this way. I mean, there might have been an alternative that would not have been as financially beneficial for the developer, but wouldn't have required all the setbacks either, so.
I'm open for a, any additional discussion or a motion? We are on D. We are on D.
Uh, move to deny P C twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two.
Are we? Is that denial in whole or uh, for the plat with the standard setbacks, can we do that one way or? What's the best way to, I don't know if that, um.
As it's presented, it shows fifteen feet.
So it would depend on if. If you're in denial of the plat itself or if it's just a setback, if just a setback's an issue, then that could be potentially something that. If you wanted it to go back to the original, then you could do a. You could basically say, if you wanna do an approval with the correct setbacks, that's possible, or, um. However, however that. That works, I'm trying to think in my head too, cause that's. Cause if you do denial, it'd be denial for the whole plat, uh, if you're only upset, it just, so it depends on what you're. But if it's for the setbacks, then that's something that could be. That could be potentially changed, but that's what is shown on the plat, so.
There was more than, there was more than that issue with this plat, all right, that needed correcting?
Um, the, it was the setbacks, it was the, uh, the others have been taken care of, that was dropped off today. For the, the street name and then the signature blocks. That was submitted and that, that's ready to go, it's just the setbacks is the only thing staff could not sign off on.
Yeah, I mean, is there any discussion on?
I, I don't know that I, I don't have any issue with the plat, uh, the, the setback is my. I'm not in favor of the setback being reduced.
That's, that's, that's my issue as well, I mean, I. I, I, I'm in favor of the plat with the required setbacks. With our standard setbacks.
So the motion is to. Approve with required setbacks, is that the, is that the correct motion?
Yeah, you could do a contingent approval on the setbacks being changed to the correct.
It's the front setback's the only thing that changed, correct?
Correct.
So the front sh- setback according to the ordinance would be twenty-five feet versus fifteen, so you, I don't know if it would help to just state that. I don't know, that sound.
And so does the motion need to address the other things that you received today that's noted in that packet?
Yeah, that's already been taken care of, so it doesn't, that doesn't need to be addressed.
So, if you approved it with twenty-five, can they go back to the board of adjustment and request fifteen? Uh, I'm just asking, I mean, do they have a right to do it?
My understanding is they would have it, that, yeah, they would have that right, I believe, I mean, if they, they're doing the same, they're doing the same thing, I mean, it's the same thing they did before, so.
Okay. Yes, yes, I understand, yeah, okay, thank you.
So.
Did you make a motion?
Ed, we didn't get a second, so we'll just consider that motion dead.
Okay.
If we wanna have another motion. Are you sure your mic's on?
Can I ask something please? Can I, can I speak?
You can, please come up and give us your name.
Okay, yes. Uh, my name is Benjamin Jia, I'm one of the owners of the land during development, Wu is another owner, and the third one is not here tonight. So the reason we are asking for the fifteen feet front setback, as Danny already pointed out. Is really a structural decision, it's an engineering decision, it's not like we try to make a benefit of this, you know. Because of the way it was designed, the street lineup, and that's the way it's lined up right now. So for us to fit any homes of decent size, which like, you know, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventy hundred, that's which is we are doing that in that community. That is the setback we need, I mean, we rather to have, like, for all the other streets, we are not asking for fifteen. We know the city requirement, we know it's twenty-five, so that's why for all the other streets we do not need it, we maintain twenty-five from that. The only thing we are asking is really just the surrounding homes, which is maybe about ten, ten, ten to eleven. That's, uh, because of facing the gas line, the easement, we are forced to move things ahead, okay? So, that's really, it's a structural engineering decision, we really not forced through this. The second thing is, because we are already granted with fifteen feet front setback, so the. The surrounding basically of the whole community now become fifteen, now which is uniformal, you know, from community perspective, when we look at this. It's really more uniformal going this way, you know, when you go along a street, all the outside homes have the fifteen. Front setback, so it's, that's another reason, it's really a good thing, you know, to have that, otherwise, you go fifteen on the Venus. And then suddenly go to, when you turn around, become twenty-five, you know? So, fifteen go around, uniformal, that's good, and also part of the main reason is forced by the, the house size. If we don't change it, we really cannot do anything with the surrounding, you know, the, the ten homes. It's like, it's just too short, you know, for us to build, so we really ask you, all of you to really consider to approve this. Because then if you don't approve, we're gonna go back to the board of adjustment, do another round of same thing. And then it basically forces to delay the project development, and we rather not to see that, you know? I mean, I understand your perspective, because you are first time seeing the plat, you're seeing all these things. Uh, I understand this, but uh. It's, it's just, you know, very, uh. It's, it's engineering, just, you know, design, you know, design issue really. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, probably my reservation is that we've never done that, so that's probably first, my first reservation is we've never given a variance upfront or.
We're getting a habit of doing variances.
And, um.
This committee.
So it's, that, that, I'll say that's probably my first reason for hesitating, just cause we've never done it before, um.
I think, I think, I, I think I understand the, the issue, and just, you know, from a, from a personal message, you know, I. Uh, I appreciate, uh, you know, the development and, and, and spending money in our community, uh, you know, but, uh, you know, I, you know. To, to the point that was just made, I don't think this is the, the, you know, the right time to start making variances, uh, upfront, um. And so I think, if, if it's an engineering or drawing issue, time to redraw.
Yeah, cause that's, we create a lot of on-street parking, so I think that's something that we should, probably should avoid.
That's, that's a good point about the parking, I haven't even. I hadn't even considered that.
Do we have a motion? Discussion? Coffee break?
I make a motion to approve with the required setbacks. Not the, not the, and I don't know how to say that.
Twenty-five foot front setback?
Tw- yeah, there you go, I make a motion to approve with the twenty-five foot setbacks on the lots.
In the front?
In the front, twenty-five foot front setbacks.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, call for a vote please.
I clicked yes, but it disappeared before I could click save.
Okay. So it's approved, you got it, okay, we're doing it again? Okay. It does still have to go before city council, so this is a recommendation, they can.
No, it's okay, that is.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it's the street, that's what I wanna. Yeah, it is, I mean, it sounds like it. I guess it's, I mean, nobody says you have, I don't know, I don't know if it says you have to take it to your property line. So. Hey, there we go, no new business in the form of a question, and the hopeful, the answer is no. Uh, do we have motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Call for a vote please? The mic's working now, adjourn, it works, uh. Thank you.